I will call the order of the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on September 20th, 2024 through posting a notification to the press in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 19.84. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
You were scaring me for a second. Okay, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Henry Schmelz, the Principal of Marshall Middle School. Principal Schmelz came to the Janesville School District in 2020 after serving as a middle school principal in two other districts for a total of 15 years. Henry's teaching background was in social studies and as a principal, he brings that teaching passion to his daily work. Mr. Schmelz has over 30 years in education. He received his bachelor's degree and social studies teachings license from California State University Sacramento before becoming a middle school and high school social studies teacher in Rancho Cordova, California. In 1995, Mr. Schmelz earned his master's degree in school administration. Principal Schmelz, who do you have with you this evening?
I have with me Ms. Sheridan Sumter. She is currently an eighth grade student at Marshall Middle School. Every other day, she leads our school in our morning daily announcements and the Pledge of Allegiance. She is on our student council. She is also a member of our Red Wing, which helps new students come in and get familiar with our school. And when she's not here, you can find her on the dance floor at Dance Studio 5678 where she is an active dancer. So with that, Sheridan, you're up.
Is it on?
It's blinking. Say it in here. Oh, now it's working.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How about a motion to adopt the September 24th, 2024 Board of Education Agenda?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in...
Online?
We do it online? Okay, thank you.
Is that an A or an A'?
All right, I have your safety message for you. I've been thinking about some fire safety strategies for our homes and offices. And one of the things that came up are safety tips for power strips. I know that's something that we often use and there are a lot of considerations that I think we don't always consider when utilizing them. So here are some tips. Don't use a power strip as a permanent replacement. Power strips are not a substitute for permanent wiring. Keep away from moisture. Don't use power strips in damp areas like bathrooms, kitchens, utility rooms. I even saw basements if your basement is prone to moisture. Unplug them when not in use. Do not overload. Overloading a power strip can create a fire hazard. One thing that was not included, I'll add a few more, but along overloading is, I don't know if you know that you are not supposed to plug a space heater into a power strip. That can be quite dangerous. So that's something to be careful of, especially in the workplace, because we don't necessarily always have enough outlets for the things that we need. So keep that in mind. I learned that the hard way when the fire inspection happened at a place of business that I happen to know. Keep away from children and pets. Use a grounded outlet. Don't daisy chain. In other words, don't plug one power strip into another power strip. Do not cover them. You want to keep them uncovered so air can circulate. You want to check them regularly. Notice if they are hot. I guess if you're checking them regularly and you notice if the power strip is feeling warm to the touch, you should unplug it immediately and dispose of. Avoid plugging kitchen appliances like coffee makers, microwave toasters, slow cookers, et cetera, into power strips because they were not made to be used for larger appliances such as those. That's what I have for you. Thanks.
I'm still laughing about the Pledge of Allegiance thing to myself. All right. Okay. Student presenters from Rock University High School, Claire DeKoff.
Good evening, Commissioners and Superintendent Holzman. My name is Claire DeKoff and I've been going to Rock University High School throughout all four years of my high school career. To start, I'd like to talk a little bit about why I joined RUHS. So I've personally never actually went to a brick and mortar school before my freshman year. I always had some combination of either virtual or homeschool education, but I knew that the benefits of an in-person school would become a little too hard to ignore come high school, at least for my personal situation. Those benefits mainly being the structure of live classes and the ability to engage in my community at school. The only problem was that I knew that I was not likely to thrive in a typical high school environment, given how harsh the transition from my normal would be. So when my family discovered RUHS, we were pretty excited that it seemed to check all the boxes for what I would want out of a school. It has an approachable and friendly atmosphere and a lot of freedom around scheduling while still maintaining structure in classes. I'm also happy to say that RUHS is very community-oriented, both within the school itself and in the greater city of Janesville. Along with having a tight-knit group of 94 students this year, we're constantly provided with options to participate in our community. In fact, we've recently been given the chance to join the Enchanted Forest and Hollywood Hayride events, as well as the trunk-or-treat at Riverside Park. Since joining my school, I've also been able to become involved in events and organizations, both statewide and even internationally. Among others, we offer two classes I've taken that I find present some pretty incredible opportunities. Great World Text is a program run by UW Madison where schools across Wisconsin will all read one book for students to then create and share a unique project based on the themes of the novel at the college's yearly conference. I've taken it two years and in both cases had a wonderful time presenting projects and seeing everyone else's amazing interpretations of the books. Somehow, an even more exciting class to take is Critical Issues Forum, because it allows students to connect with other people from both Japan and in past years, Russia. It's organized by the Middlebury Institute of International Studies in California and it centers around youth discussion and activism surrounding nuclear disarmament. Critical Issues, or CIF, even provides two students from our school the chance to travel to either California or Japan to take part in their conference each year, the trip usually being all expenses paid by the Middlebury Institute. I've taken CIF every year I've been at RUHS, so I've actually been one of those two people before. And I'll say that connecting with international students was an incredible experience that I'm not likely to forget anytime soon. It's safe to say that, for me at least, CIF is one of the highlights of going to my school. Even with all the things I've mentioned so far, though, I've yet to probably hit the most important thing about RUHS, which is our status as a middle college. What that means is that basically, students are able and highly encouraged to take college courses throughout, through our accompanying school, Blackhawk Tech, during their high school years. The model we're expected to follow is to take mostly high school classes for our freshman and sophomore years, although that does include AP classes and transcripted credit courses, which are basically Blackhawk courses taught by RUHS teachers, and they count for college credit across a majority of higher educational institutions. By your junior year, you're expected to have all the core high school credits you need, and you earn the rest of your elective credits through Blackhawk. The college offers a wide variety of programs that students can enter, and the two-year time span allows for some to even earn an entire associate's degree before graduating high school. This year, six students are on track to achieve that. Despite the fact that RUHS offers an accelerated education, it's important to note that it's made for every student to get a chance to get ahead, not just those we consider talented or gifted. The best part of our system is that none of the cost goes to the students or families. Last year, a total of 368 college credits were earned at RUHS, which saves students $55,000. It goes without saying that everyone at RUHS is extremely grateful to the district for all of the amazing opportunities that have been created with this money. I'm currently able to work on my degree in dental hygiene, so I thank you personally as well. Five minutes is really not enough time to fully express how valuable RUHS is to so many people, including myself. So I highly encourage that you seek out other methods of learning about the school. We have an active Facebook and Instagram, and staff are always willing to answer any questions or set up any visits if you reach out. Thank you so much for your time and your continued support of RUHS.
Next, from the Rock River Charter School, Hemenah Guzman.
Good evening, Mr. Holzman and the school board commissioners. My name is Hemenah and I'm a 17-year-old junior. I attend Rock River Charter School in the Alt Ed program. Before coming to Rock River, I attended Parker High School. I found out I was pregnant during the fourth week of my sophomore year. I knew deep down, going to Parker wasn't for me anymore. I'd originally planned to go online, but I was recommended to talk to Michelle Wales from the Charter School. I still wasn't too sure until I met her in person. Once I did, that's when I knew I would be happy there. At Rock River, I'm in the afternoon section of the Alt Ed program. The most students I've seen in my class have been at least 12. I have three classes every day besides Wednesday. That is the day for study hall of work that I have not finished. This has made me feel so much more confident in school. I have all the normal classes that Parker has. I even take online classes to get more credits. At Rock, oh, sorry, at Rock River, I have a path to graduation. After I finish the Alt Ed program, I will be transitioning to the e-learning online credit recovery program and earn the last credits I need. I will also be doing the Start College Now program at Blackhawk Technical College in the spring. Then I'll be graduating early in the spring with the class of 2025 in hopes of going off to college next fall. Rock River Charter School's current enrollment is at 266 students spread between four different programs, including Alt Ed, Ramp, e-learning, and GED-02 program. Our current waiting list for placement at Rock River Charter School stands at 85 students between the four programs. We are holding study at 100% success rate and five students ready to graduate. Rock River Charter School continues to be a great option for many students in the school district of Janesville. As we end our first month of school, students are settling in nicely and working hard on their classwork. We would like to extend a thank you to the school district of Janesville for scheduling Life Touch to come and take school pictures. This is the first time in Rock River Charter's existence that we have had our photos taken. We would also like to thank we would also like to thank Mr. Gaglott for taking the time to photograph our seniors in caps and gowns so that each Rock River Charter graduate has senior pictures. Looking ahead, students are getting ready to attend the Wisconsin Education Fair at Craig High School on October 1st, as well as the Blackhawk Technical College Technical Education Days that will run later this fall. Finally, Rock River Charter School will be holding its first set of conferences for the school year later in October. As a school, we take parent involvement seriously and hold mandatory teacher, parent-teacher conferences three different times throughout the year. We continue, we continue to have excellent attendance as these conferences are averaging over 90% parent-student participation. Thank you so much for your time and allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
No, I know where I am. I'm just a little emotional right now. Okay, from Arise, Lucy Lascano.
Hi, my name is Lucy Lascano. I am 13 years old and I'm happy to say I'm finishing my last year of middle school. This is my second year out of Rise Virtual Academy. I love going to Arise, and even though it's a virtual, virtual school, I go every Tuesday to an open lab. I get help from my teacher if I need it, and I get to hang out with my best friend who I met last year. Before I attended Arise, I was scoring below average on my star and forward test. Now I'm meeting expectations and I feel more confident. Another great thing about Arise is I can do the things I love. I take choir at Edison and I just got into Edison Show Choir. At Arise, there's a lot of opportunities for me to hang out with people my age. This Thursday is our first field trip of the year. We're going to the Veterans Museum, taking a tour of the Capitol Building and stopping at the zoo. We take field trips once a month and they are always fun. Next year, next week, we are going to the movies and having a Halloween party. Arise is a great place for kids who need other options other than going into in-person school. Thank you for your time, thank you for your time for listening to me today. By the way, there are only 163 days left of middle school.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And the families and all the support that is here for them, teachers and staff, right? Thank you very much. You don't have to stay. You can go home. You can stay. Don't look at them all.
You gave them the excuse.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
Next time, head clinics is up here.
Yes. Okay, citizen comments. Welcome to all those who have signed up to speak to the board tonight. We value your input, interest in our school community. Accordingly, through School Board Policy 0167.3, titled Public Comment at School Board Meetings, the board allows citizens an opportunity to express interest in and concerns for the schools during the citizen comments portion of school board meetings. We would also like to remind you that school board meetings are for the purpose of carrying on the business of the district. They are not public meetings, but official business meetings held in public. To ensure that board meetings are conducted in an orderly and productive manner, all public comments, no matter the topic, topic are subject to the following regulations. Number one, time limit. Speakers will be given one, three-minute opportunity to address the board. This time limit will be enforced. If the speaker continues past the expiration time, the school board president or district official will ask the speaker to stop and leave the podium. Per Board Policy 0167.3 adopted March 9th, 2021, the portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited to speak shall be limited to 30 minutes unless expended by the presiding officer. Number two, conduct. Speakers must conduct themselves with respect and civility towards others. Participants shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. No person may address or question board members individually. Prohibited conduct includes conduct which is disruptive to the meeting, interferes with the ability of others to observe the meeting or speak to the board, or interferes with the ability of the board to conduct business. This includes conduct which is abusive, harassing, or threatening, and conduct which includes use of vulgarities or profanities. If a speaker violates this rule, we may prohibit the speaker from further comment at the meeting. Number three, topics for discussion. Speakers may not comment on confidential personal disputes. Share grievances involving individual school employees who did not implicate issues of public concern, or share individual student disciplinary matters, as there are other channels available that provide for consideration and disposition of such matters. Number four, board response. Pursuant to Wisconsin Open Meetings Law, board members are prohibited from responding to public comments unless the topic was identified on the public posting of the board agenda. And number five, recess and adjourn, in the event an individual's conduct causes a disruption to the board meeting, and the board cannot continue its business, the gavel may be used to declare recess or to adjourn the meeting. In addition, in such conduct, if such conduct constitutes a threat to the health or safety of another individual or individuals at the meeting, law enforcement may be contacted to restore order and safety. We have two requests at this time. First is from Ben Woods. Hey, Ben. Just state your name and your address, please. When you get up, please. Thank you.
My name is Ben Woods. My address is 731 North Arch Street here in Janesville. All right. So, um, my child just started school this fall in P4J, and it's been a really great experience so far. But I was very troubled recently when I learned about the school district's media release policy. I was told that in order for my child to be included in the elementary school yearbook, that I must also consent to their photo being shared on the school district's social media accounts. I reached out to the district's public information officer with my concern and was told that this district does not have the ability to maintain multiple lists for various permissions. It's 2024. I think we should all be aware by now the contrast in degree of access between a public social media account and a printed elementary school yearbook, which is not publicly available at our local library. And even if it was, would only be accessible by someone who showed up in person or contacted the library directly. I take my child's right to privacy on the internet at such a young age very seriously, and I hope that the school district will as well. The school's current information release policy is Board Policy 5500, and it has not been revised since 1991, before the existence of a public internet. And I implore you today to look at revising this policy to allow for students to participate in non-public school-based print media without being forced to also participate as a tool in the school district's online marketing presence. The current policy states, and I quote, "Directory data," which in this case is a child's photo, "may be disclosed to any person if the school has given public notice of the categories of information which is designated as directory data with respect to each student and has allowed a reasonable time thereafter for the adult student, parent, legal guardian, or guardian ad litem of any student to inform the school in writing that all or any part of the directory data may not be released without the consent of the adult student, parent, legal guardian, or guardian ad litem." With a single-body media consent form like we have currently, as I understand it, I am essentially being asked to consent to my child's photo being disclosed to any person without limitation, which is a huge, huge privacy concern for me, when I'm simply asking to only consent to my child's photo being used in the yearbook and nothing else. The same policy also opens with the statement, "The intent of all records is to serve the best interests of the student. I don't believe that signing on to be a marketing prop in exchange for being included in a made-for-the-students yearbook is in the best interest of the student, and I hope that the school district will agree." So please, I implore you to maintain a photo release for digital media separate from yearbooks so that young children can enjoy seeing their friends in the yearbook while still having a right to privacy on the global, globally accessible public internet. Thank you for your time.
Krista White, 4131 South Tracy Road. I just wanted to start by clearing up something that I heard, that anything that I talk about here has to do with, you know, upper level and the people, the leadership, never about the students in a negative way or about what they're doing. Everything is based on what I feel is best for the students. But what I actually wondering or would like to address today is recent issues with school safety as far as just, you know, not issues with you guys, but that being at the forefront. The emails, as a parent, greatly appreciated, but I still, I guess, I don't have the confidence that my three beautiful girls are safe at the school they're at, and my son at another school, because I would like, I just think as a parent, more details about what exactly is happening to ensure the kid's safety versus, you know, don't worry, it's all good. Just because I work in a different district that has an excellent system. I just currently or recently, you know, got all the details about. And as a former employee here, I don't think it quite matches up. And it doesn't really matter where you live, you know, things can happen anywhere, whether it's, you know, downtown Chicago or like in the middle of North Dakota with 800 people in, you know, a small town. So that doesn't discriminate and so, but as a parent, I would just like a little more like ease of mind or peace of mind about, you know, what exactly do we have in place to ensure our kids are safe in case of an event. And then my second thing is, and a lot of it is kind of just more details maybe for parents of kids in sports, because as far as like, when I was in school, we didn't have a trainer, you know, on staff all of the time, but I'm wondering about the duties of the personal trainer, or like what role they're taking, because a lot of times it feels like there's like a diagnosis that takes place, and then only he can decide whether your child is playing without, you know, official, well, he's not a doctor, but also without the equipment and necessary things to diagnose, or, you know, say whether or not they can play. And as a parent, I haven't received any communication with, regarding what the exact role is, because to me, it's, he's, as a trainer, is, you know, like physical therapy aiding in, you know, issues, muscle issues, but not deciding whether or not a child can play in the game without being able to diagnose, and if it is concerned, then there should be, be referred to an M.D. or D.O. And also then, because I'm concerned two kids will be afraid to share any issues because they want to play, but also maybe they're not playing because they're told they can't, even though there hasn't been a scope, a plan moving forward on what, you know, like there needs to be a plan, not just can you, you can't play or you can't, we need more, kind of both of those topics are details, I guess, needed. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item four, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Dahmerhausen.
Second.
Hey, Kevin.
Yo.
Could we pull summer school, this is not a bad thing. Can we pull summer school off of that? Consent?
Sure.
Okay.
Are you guys both good with that? Okay. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda except for, what item number is that? Four-point-five. Okay.
Paul?
It doesn't come on.
You're not on, I think, I think you have to be on the agenda though, you're, you're on a different page.
I'm actually on, maybe you're right. Thank you. I'm speaking in summer school. Oh, I voted the wrong one.
Do you see that? Oh, no, no.
I hit.
Right there?
Yeah, right, that red.
I clicked EA.
Try it one more time.
Now we're in.
Well, it kicked, it kicked me out of my agenda now, so I'm just getting back into the agenda.
It keeps kicking me out every time I vote.
Okay, so she has verbally confirmed EA.
Okay.
So it's unanimous.
That passes unanimously six to zero. Good job, kids.
We need lots of training, lots of opportunity.
Paul, I'm sorry, I just want to commend the summer school team for all of the hard work that you do throughout the year, for a tremendous summer school season. When we see this great report and it goes through the consent agenda, I know that it's like, oh, great, there isn't anything big that we need to discuss, but I just want to say how much I appreciate, I see, I, I have heavily participated with my family going back to a student through this district, and then also my children for the last, like, I don't know, twelve, thirteen years, and we are so fortunate in this community to have the resources available, and every year they get better and there are more, and I had an elementary school student that got to learn Spanish, and she did wonderful things and came home excited, and it was hot at the school she was at, and she never once complained, and she was excited, and you know what? Summer school starts earlier than the regular school year. I don't like that so much because I have to adjust my alarm clock a little earlier than normal, but she didn't complain about that, and I just think that's such a win. There are so many kids participating, swim, and the golf program, and strength and conditioning, and there was a really cool, like, video special effects class that one of my kids participated in, and I get some pushback sometimes when I sign people up for things that they didn't necessarily sign up for themselves, and I say, just trust me, you're going to have a fun time, and they always do. And so I just really want our community to recognize how awesome our program is, and the work isn't just in the summer, it's all year long, and then also I want to thank all of the staff that, they're not, they're getting paid, but they're people who would otherwise be doing other things, and they are choosing to spend part of their summers with our families, and their colleagues, and our students, and I just am really grateful for all of the enriching, fun programs and extra learning opportunities, and safe places where our kids can also get food, so thank you very much.
I just also want to take a moment to thank Paul for his leadership. Thank you. I've been on the school board for many years, and I continually like to enjoy seeing your face when this report comes on, so thank you for that, but also when I look at the report too, I often see the same names for the head teachers year after year after year, so I want to give a shout out to all of the head teachers that continually, again, year after year after year, do that leadership within their own buildings for summer school. So obviously, they want to come along with the ride with you, Paul, so I just appreciate your leadership and everything that you do to make summer school success for both the students and the families, and I know it's in the memo, but I do want to give a shout out, because you shouted out Michelle Johnson, the summer school administrative assistant, for all of the support that she gives to our families and students, because as a former parent and enrolling my own children in summer school, I sometimes had technological difficulties and found myself down here at the E.S.C. asking for help, so I do appreciate that, so thank you for sharing that as well, so that she can get some recognition for all the work she did.
And I want to speak as well, I did not know Paul, now I, now I see him, and I was extremely impressed with that report. I mean, I didn't know anything about our summer school programs at all, and I was just extremely impressed, and, I mean, there's such a wide variety of activities, just like Liz was saying, and, and I was really impressed with the planting the school gardens, so I really appreciate all the really interesting things you're doing, thank you.
Okay, how about a motion to approve the summer school report?
So moved.
Motion is second. We shall vote. That passes unanimously six to zero. Thank you, everybody. Next item, five-point-one, Staff Engagement Survey Update.
That's the one. Good evening, commissioners. Tonight I have the pleasure of presenting to you, reviewing our staff engagement survey after a three-year hiatus that we used to run through the Studer Education Group or Huron Education Group. We took it on ourselves and used Qualtrics in collaboration with CISA Six and our data analyst to run our survey for April of twenty-twenty-four, or spring of twenty-twenty-four. So, tonight I'm going to talk to you, again, the survey opened April eighth through April twenty-second. Timing is always tricky. We had great results with our survey, both participation and I would say our overall results were very, very good, and timing is tricky, so we always have events, the key to timing and running surveys is making sure you do it at the same time every year. So our plan is to run the survey again with similar questions at about the same time so that we can match apples to apples, make sure the data matches up, so that's always a good thing. We had one thousand seventy-two respondents in the survey, we wanted to make sure we provided employees with a confidential voice to be heard, so one thousand seventy-two respondents had the opportunity to speak their truth when it came to our survey questions, and anything is going well or not going well, they let us know about that. We did analyze their comments for themes, and you'll see that later in the presentation, and the survey was based on a five-point scale, which is very similar to the surveys of the past and the Studer surveys. You can see this graph, and it looks like a big pie of green here. I really want to break this down. We had sixty-four percent of our staff are teachers that filled out this survey, that relates to, actually equals about six hundred and seventy-four teachers participating in the survey, giving us their opinion. That's always, that's a huge amount of teachers, that we have about eight hundred and, I don't know, fifty or so teachers on average, so literally three-quarters of them pretty much filled out the survey, gave us their opinion. We had three hundred and thirty-nine support staff or non-certified staff, again, thirty-two-point-two percent of the staff, and then the remaining forty-one were administration, again, a good representation of our employees and their opinions. Some things to celebrate, I said it was a five-point scale, if you look at this, essentially, to summarize, the staff feel very connected to the work that they do, they feel supported in the work that they do in the building or department that they do it in, and they certainly know what's expected of the work that they do. So we're, we're doing a great job of communicating our expectations to them, and clearly they're feeling good about the work. If you look down, look at the slide, I, we put on the top six, our highest score, four-point-six, I mean, that's pretty much unheard of when you, when you look at that, and I know Mr. Holsman will chime in with his theory on ten survey takers and ten points and all that later, but as you look down that list, that, those are high scores, and even better, when you look at our opportunities, oh, sorry, when we look at our opportunities, those are still fairly high scores. For those of you who are here for the Studer surveys, many of our discussions centered around that first opportunity for growth for us, I'm given the opportunity to be involved in decisions affecting me. Historically, that has been a low-scoring question. Many times people misunderstand the idea of providing input and getting, giving feedback versus you're deciding what I want, and so many people give feedback, but if we don't decide what exactly they were hoping for, they say, well, my feedback didn't matter, and that's not always the, the truth. We're working very hard to provide people, people avenues for feedback, to provide feedback. Jamie has been working on that with our upcoming agenda item, I know Allison Dr. Graff and her team worked on that with the district calendars, we had meet and confers recently, and we continue to schedule those, so we are always looking for feedback and input. With anything, we have to make a decision, and not everybody's going to agree with it, so just, just bear that in mind as you look at these results. As you go down, again, I'm included and valued as a contributor, comfortable with voicing my ideas, three-point-eight, again, four is good, right? Three-point-eight is very close, three would be the middle ground or neutral, so there, again, leaning towards the, I agree with this statement, in all, nearly all of these, except for that first one. Mr. Holsman, if you want to give your example?
Yeah, thanks. I think to kind of give you some perspective of what an average would look like, if we had, overall, if you have a five, five people out of ten, so if ten is your whole group, one-point-oh, if five people voted strongly agree, and four people voted agree, your score would be forty-four, right? So it's five times five is twenty-five, like, and so you need to see what it takes in order to get a four-point-four or four-point-oh, so in this case, the three-point-eight would mean that eight people would have said four, and three people, or two people would have said three, together that gets three-point-eight, right? So you, you see that, overall, there's no doubt we have work to do, and we want to make sure that we do that, but, you know, when we're seeing areas of four-point-six and four-point-five, you know, when you think about principal feedback and some of those areas, we're asking for anonymous surveys, that's really, really strong scores. When we looked historically at what we had, a lot of times we were in the three-point-fours, four-point-ones were some of our best scores, and so, you know, at that time, people were feeling really good about that, and gave us really good feedback, so I think that's just something to celebrate, to kind of give you some perspective, when we got the feedback back, unfortunately, the first thing I said is, Scott, you got to check these numbers, they're too good, right? So then he went back and checked the numbers, I said, yep, that's what the data says, and so we need to make sure that we celebrate when things are really strong, and for people to feel really good, and so just want to make sure that we take a moment to say yes, that's positive.
Thank you. One, one more thing about this, as you look at the bottom two, the four-point-os, our school department regularly celebrates our successes, and I should say the middle, receive recognition from my principal or supervisor for excellent work, that, as educators, we're traditionally terrible at celebrating our own successes, so I'm not surprised that this is a growth opportunity, but there again, I want to make sure you understand that four-point-oh is a pretty good score on that, we obviously have some work to do, but we continue to work harder at celebrating ourselves. This is a Word cloud, and what we did differently with principals this year is, so we took all the comments, and we were able to essentially put them through a computer program that sorted the comments, both negative and the positive comments, and we created Word clouds for each building, this is, these are the ones that you see in the sideshow for the district. Clearly, what, what you see there, the words that are mentioned the most have the bigger space, so students for celebrations and for opportunities are both highlighted, if you look at, let me get to the right slide, teacher, school staff, they're all very similar for opportunities and growth, so it's interesting that people have differing opinions even on that, so one person can think we're doing great, and another person might have opportunities for growth on the same matter. So, again, we want to make sure that we read the comments and we take them seriously, but at the same time, we have to focus in on the themes and what we can do to make this district a better place. So you might ask, what are we going to do with these results? Well, we're presenting them to you as a district tonight, and at the start of the school year, we presented these results to the principals, we provided a template for the principals to present those to their staff, and essentially, we asked the principals to have a discussion with their leadership team, and department manager, I should add, to talk about what these results mean. It's a first, it's our first results in three years, it's our first survey, what does this data mean, is there anything we can glean from this and work on this year as a team within the building or department to do better? And essentially then, we'll get our second data point as of April of this month, and hopefully we'll see more trends and see if we did make some progress, or are there other opportunities for growth. As we collect more data, we'll have more information from which we can develop a plan within the building or, or department, but it does provide for great discussions within each, with each school, so. Any questions? Hearing no? All right, thank you. Yep, thank you.
Are you ready, Jamie? Presentation and Consider of Approval of Retirement Addendum to the Staff Handbook.
Okay. Good evening, everybody, good to see you again tonight. The goal is to present the final early retiree addendum and to pass it along for approval. So you may have heard me say a lot of these things already once, I just want to make sure that I'm giving you the, all of the information needed to make a very well-informed decision, so just bear with me as we go over information that we could have possibly gone over already. So tonight we'll talk about retirement eligibility, the current retirement benefits, the early retiree addendum, health reimbursements, and then finally the administrative recommendation. So, starting off with retirement eligibility, in order to receive retirement benefits through the school district of Janesville, you had to have been hired prior to July first of two thousand and fifteen, fall between the ages of fifty-five and sixty-four, and my to have been hired prior to July 1st of 2015, fall between the ages of 55 and 64, and must have worked in a full-time capacity for a minimum of 10 years immediately preceding retirement. Okay? And within that, if a person becomes eligible for Medicare, they are no longer able to be enrolled in the plan. So what kind of benefits would this person expect to receive? So for those who are to retire by June 30th of 2025, they would receive 36 months of board-provided insurance. The next tier, as you can see, July of 2025 through June 30th of 2035, that amount decreases down to 24 months. And then for the final tier of July 1st of 2035 through 2045, that is down to 12 months. All of these options allow the opportunity for any bank sick time to be converted to purchase additional months of insurance. And so just to provide some clarification on the sick leave conversion, the district currently has two banks. There is one bank prior to 7-1 of 2015. At any time in that bank is allowed to purchase additional months of health insurance, eight hours equals $147. Anytime accrued after 7-1 of 2015 can also be used to purchase additional months of health insurance. Or if in the event that the early retiree does not need additional months of health insurance to reach age 65, that can be paid out into a tax-sheltered annuity for them. Now, this next group of employees is for those who are hired after July 1st of 2015. There is no assurance, insurance tied to this retirement. Okay? So the eligibility requirements are similar, where they have to be 55 years of age, and they had to have worked in a full-time capacity. But instead of insurance, it is all converted into a tax-sheltered annuity. Okay. Now on to the early retiree addendum. So why are we doing this? As you know, effective June 30th, eligible employees who are eligible to retire, if they do not retire by June 30th, they could potentially lose one year of health insurance. Okay? So what we wanted to do is we wanted to minimize or stagger the loss of, of these staff members. Our turnover rate, on average, is anywhere from 10 to 12%. And we feel that with the richness of this benefit, if we did not offer some sort of incentive for staff to say, to stay, that we could see a lot of people walking out the door in one year. And as everybody knows, with the current market trends, candidates are just kind of becoming increasingly less and less for each open position that we have. So if we can try and at least stagger that and not have 130 employees leave in one year, it would just be very beneficial. In addition to that, I did, once we gathered the list of these employees, I did reach out to them to get their opinion and what would make them want to stay. And my key takeaway from all those meetings was that third-year benefit. You know, that was important to them. So, you know, just want to extend that opportunity for them to have the potential to maintain those benefits. Okay. So then, we took some action. We worked with Foster and Foster Consulting Firm. We informed them of what our goals were and what we wanted to accomplish. And they helped us design this plan. In addition to that, we worked with legal counsel, met with a JEA, got their input. And as I had stated previously, we did also meet with some of these employees who are going to be eligible to retire. So after this slide is where we kind of dive into the heart of the plan. And so before I go any further, on the very last page of your packet is somewhat of a cheat sheet that you're more than welcome to tear off and, and kind of, just kind of follow along, because just want to make sure everybody is, is understanding everything. So just to clarify, I just want to remind you that when we are processing retirements, the district uses three specific, what I'll call buckets, to determine how much and how long an employee will be enrolled in the insurance. Okay? And so when they come in, they are given a date. They're given a date that their insurance will end. Under this proposed plan, the employees would continue to receive the same monetary value of the benefit in lieu of months of insurance. Okay? And so how I want to explain that, you know, I just want to be sure that everybody is aware that this group of people would be provided it in an HRA account, and they would be eligible to go on the marketplace, find another insurance. They could also enroll in Cobra. And there's a few other, other options that we'll go over later on. Okay, so we'll take it bucket by bucket. So the first bucket that we determine is the 36 months that are provided by the board. Okay? The new benefit, we would call HRA 1. Okay? And what we would do is the district would take the district's portion, and we would multiply that, sorry, let me back up. We would take the district's portion, and they would receive a deposit for up to 36 months of that amount each month. Or they would receive an allocation, I should say. So what that would look like is if, for example, if they are enrolled in employee spouse, in that first HRA 1 bucket that they would be provided, they would receive a monthly allocation of $1,233. And that's just based upon this year's premiums. With this benefit, what we would allow to happen is if there is a balance in this account when the employee turns 65, we will allow them to keep it, and they can, it can expand to cover approved medical expenses. Okay? So any questions on the first bank?
So if an individual chooses this, they get it for three years or not?
Up, up to three years.
Up to three years.
Okay. So then, the next piece of information that I use to process somebody's retirement would be their bank one, which is the time prior to July 1st of 2015. We will call that ba, excuse me, HRA 2. And what we would do is we would take the number of days that the employee has, multiply that by 147, and instead, instead of providing months of insurance, we would take that balance, and we would evenly distribute it into that HRA over the 36 months. Okay? So while our current benefit, we transition it to health insurance with this benefit, they're getting another monthly payment. I would also like to mention on this that after their 36-month allocations, if there is a balance in this bank, it does come back to the district. And that is similar practice to what we do today with that same bank one, where they can't utilize it after the age of 65. Okay? And then bank two. This is sick time after 7-1 of 15, used to purchase, it's currently used to purchase additional months of health insurance. If they don't need the additional months, they are paid out into the tax-sheltered annuity. Okay? Under the new benefit, we would process it the same way as we did with the previous bank, where we would take the number of days that they have, times that by 147. But this time, we're just going to give it to them in one lump allocation. So what that means is if their balance is $15,000, that's what they would have, it wouldn't be going in a monthly payment. It's just allowed, you know, and the employee has access to it immediately. If there is a balance in this account after age 65, again, they get to keep this, and they, we can expand it to use, to pay for Medicare and approved medical expenses. So here's the, kind of all three of them. Is there any questions or clarifying, anything clarifying that anybody needs? Okay, okay, all right. Carry on. So, wanted to provide you with an example of what the employee would actually experience and what they would see. Okay? So this is an employee who retires at age 58, enrolled in employment spouse, 80 and, 80 days in one bank, 20 in the other. So we would provide the employee, since they would not hit age 65, they would receive 36 months of an allocation of $1,233.14. Then we would take that bank two. We allocated that over the 36 months as well. They would receive a second payment of $326.66. Again, bank two, it is put into a lump sum. However, I did just want to provide what that balance may be if they did spread it out over 36 months. So you can see there that the retiree would receive a monthly allocation of $1,641 each month to purchase health insurance. If they don't utilize all of that, all of those funds each month, it stays there for the next month. Maybe they can find cheaper health insurance, or maybe they're able to get on a spouse's plan and let it sit there. So it would just be waiting for them to use it minus the bank two.
So just to clarify, the amount is given over 36 months, but if I only use $1,000 per month, it's still there, and I could potentially use that then for 48 months or 52 months, or however, as long as my, in that case, 59 months, if it was $1,000 a month, I could get potentially five years of insurance as opposed to three years of insurance.
That is correct.
Just want to clarify that.
Okay. This is the same example, however, it shows what the employee would receive if they were maybe closer to the Medicare eligibility age. So they would still, you know, receive payment from the 36 months of health insurance, but they would only receive 24 months of that. Again, their bank one would be divided out into 36, but they would only receive 24 months of payments of that. Their bank two or HRA three is provided in one lump sum. There are a few eligibility requirements for staff. They have to be existing staff who met all eligibility requirements to retire by June 30th of 2025. And I just want to remember that this plan is specific to this tiered group of people. So just 130 employees will be offered this option. They must work at least their full calendar assignment year, the 25 to 26 calendar, and they must be enrolled in the district's health insurance for a minimum of one year prior Some of the advantages of a health reimbursement would be, right now, it would, the retiree would only be eligible to receive reimbursements for premiums. But if there's a balance after age 65, there, we expand that to Medicare costs, and we also expand that to covered medical items. The employee is able to fit, is able to purchase a plan that fits their needs. So if they're looking for maybe more of a pharmacy-covered plan, or more of a co-pay-driven plan, they're able to kind of find what plan is going to work for them. It's portable. So if they're, you know, living here, and then all of a sudden, they decide to move to Florida, that goes with them. They can purchase insurance in Florida where they can see their doctors outside of urgent and emergency care. In addition, it's tax-free for the employer and the employee. So right now, in the one, when it goes into the tax-sheltered annuity, it is taxed once it is removed from the account. Here, it would not be taxed. And I feel one of the greatest benefits is that they're not required to utilize these funds right away. If they can, if they have the opportunity to rule in a spouse's plan, or find a cheaper insurance somewhere, they can extend the number of months of insurance that they could So I've kind of said a lot of these already, but, so how does HRA in retirement work? So in this plan design, prior to Medicare eligibility, any health insurance premiums paid with after-tax dollars, and that includes Cobra, Health Dental Vision from another employer, that can go out onto the marketplace. And in addition, the ETF plan allows for a one-time opportunity to enroll in their plan upon retirement. So that is another option that they could look at. If there's balances after Medicare eligibility, it will expand to include the Medicare B, C, and D premiums, any Medicare supplement plans, and covered medical care expenses. One thing I really want to make sure of is that they're not going out, you know, for those who take this plan, we don't want to just send them out into open water to try and find insurance themselves. So what we will do is, you know, we will work with them to kind of help guide and see what direction they want to go in. If they choose to enroll in Cobra, we can help them with that. I am also considering, after making sure this is approved, and looking for maybe a dedicated, dedicated, dedicated person with Dean or Mercy to maybe be our point of contact for employees if they want to remain with Mercy or remain with Dean. In addition to that, going to try and find a non-affiliated health insurance agent, maybe one that isn't tied to one of the healthcare systems in town. So those are just some options that we are exploring to make sure that our employees are finding the health insurance that they need. So for the administrative recommendation, employees who are eligible for retirement by June 30th, 2025, but choose to defer, will be provided the option to receive the retirement benefit through a premium-only HRA. Is there any questions?
Questions or comments, Aileen? Well, I guess, from a historic perspective, you know, we've come a long way since, not that long ago, that when our employees that were eligible earned four years of district-paid health insurance. Plus, they could, lack of a better word, purchase additional four days by the use of sick days. So we went from a potential of our employees having eight years of healthcare to now three. So it's been a, a long spread there over time. And also, not, being an educator, but it was demonstrated to me by educators here in this building that losing this many senior employees is not good for our student achievement at this time. So while it seems like a, a lot of money, but it's money, in my opinion, well-spent for our students at this time. Now, where our estimates are based on... Now, where our estimates are based on, and we need to, that the majority of these people will take this benefit. But I'm, I'm guessing, and we'll see.
We will see, yes.
That there, there are some people, and we all know, will just retire because they're ready and it's time. But we're looking to minimize the impact on our district, losing this many employees. So, um, I'm gonna be supporting this, um, initiative. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Um, Jamie, I know you've put a lot of work in the, um, benefits, whole benefits team has, among others, so I'm really grateful that, for every bit of research that you have, um, done, because I know this has been a lot. I think it's important for us to recognize that we don't, a person who is retiring after this year would not have to take this plan. They could choose the existing benefit that's there if that just was what they felt most comfortable with. And so I like options. And I, I, what I like about this is if that is a better fit for our retiree, future retiree, then I'm glad that they can have that. But if they are looking for something different, I'm grateful that our district is, is, you know, just trying new things, because I hate to see someone feeling forced to retire before they're truly ready to retire based on perhaps a year of, of insurance coverage. And so this gives more options than what they would've had, and I think that's really a positive thing. So I am interested to see how this pans out. You know, I've met with you and spoken about this, I'm grateful for your time and listening and thinking about and hearing my, what if, are we checking into this and what about this? Because our employees are, are so valuable, we care about them so much, and we just want to do the best that we can. And, um, hope that we can keep our, our people for as long as possible such that they feel good about it and that they get to choose the right time for them. So thank you, everyone, I really appreciate it.
Now to consider a motion for approval. There's a motion and it's second by Commissioner Dahmerhausen. Shall we vote? Thank you, that passes unanimously, six to zero. Good job, Jamie. Where am I at, Chris?
We're almost done.
Specifically five point three.
Alright. Update on long-range facilities plan.
Okay, thank you. I hope all of you got a, a surprise mailer, um, in your mailbox, uh, this weekend. So, those went out, um, to our community. We had our first public meeting, uh, last night at Adams. Um, had about twenty folks, uh, in attendance and we were able to give them, uh, a brief overview and then a tour of Adams and showed them some unique things that, um, likely would work. Uh, Dr. DeGraff spoke in a first-grade classroom and shared, you know, what we might need for operational referendum in regards to curriculum and our staff and our plan. Dan talked about our finance, uh, pieces. Um, and we really, you know, as, as we, Dave Leader showed them some nooks and crannies that, uh, are unique, um, in that building and some areas in special ed and things that we need to potentially upgrade. So, um, honestly, I thought it was a great meeting. They had good questions afterwards, uh, or like at the question and answer kind of time. Um, we have our next one scheduled for, uh, Lincoln Elementary School, which will do the same kind of a model, where we'll have a general session and walk around and see some unique spaces within that building, um, answer some questions, talk about the finances, and then, um, uh, release them from there. So, those things are positive. We continue to, uh, have great conversations with other community partners. Um, and I have, uh, got two-thirds of all of our schools, so I'm working through each school. When I meet with each school, I give them the one pager that has their school information on one side, then we change to your, uh, feedback to give them the operational referendum on the backside. Uh, the other message that you can pass out to folks, uh, is that we ask them to flip the ballot over, because, uh, we are the only piece on the backside of the ballot. So the front ballot, um, is, uh, the election campaigns, uh, and the backside is a referendum. So we've kinda been marketing that a little bit. We'll get, as we get closer, we'll remind them to turn the ballot over. Um, and, uh, so things are, uh, going well. We continue to have our social media posts, we continue to have our community, uh, sessions and inputs. Uh, I'll be meeting, uh, with the city council, uh, in, in a couple of weeks. Um, I'll be meeting with, you know, area community groups and, uh, so I think we're, communication is going well. Um, taking the feedback that we're getting and making some adjustments and adding those to the frequently asked questions as we go. So, if you hear something or people are asking the questions and you think that we should add to that frequently asked questions, let us know. We'll keep doing that, um, and we'll keep working on our communication and, uh, telling our people about the need that we have in the school district of Janesville.
Comments, questions, anyone? Alright, we'll move on to the Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee report.
Thank you. Alright, everyone, well, we met last on September ninth and, um, some of what we heard tonight was also presented at that meeting. For example, we saw, um, a very similar update about the staff engagement survey and so we don't need to talk about that because we already heard about it here. But another great presentation that we saw, um, or heard, was the update on our new teacher, um, onboarding process, but also the professional development that took place at the start of the school year. And I just kinda brought my own handouts, if you wanna see. I always say if you wanna see the full presentation, definitely go back and look for the, um, the link for the last PPC meeting. Dr. DeGraff presented on all of these things and it is, I think, just really so eye-opening to hear and see all the, the information that our educators are being presented with at the start of the year, so that when they start their school year, they are ready to go and they aren't having questions. They're, they're ready to educate. They're not still learning, um, how to use this new resource, how to open it up. They, they can, they can go the first day. So I think that's important. So here are some things that they talked about. Um, Learning and Innovation Department presented human resources topics, pupil services, business services, instructional technology, um, a whole lot. There were breakouts, um, specific to elementary, middle, high school. We had an orientation, ready, set, go, where they learned about the ready, set goal and what was going to be happening at that particular day when families came to meet the teachers. Um, some of us attended the welcome back day with, um, a presentation of one of our former students, and I think that was really fantastic. Here are some other district teams that had presentations. Um, K-12 Fine Arts, K-12, um, school psychologists, counselors, social workers, special education, English language, nurses, non-certified staff. So it is a really, really comprehensive professional development. Elementary, teachers learned, they did summer curriculum work. Um, there were updates on Chromebooks, AI training, common assessments, the Science of Reading Act Twenty, fifth to sixth grade transitions, and then mentoring. I mean, it's a lot, guys. Uh, middle and high school, they also did summer curriculum work, common assess, uh, common assessments, eighth through ninth grade transitions, avid strategies, AI training, and other mentoring. Um, of course, Dr. DeGraff and her team are always getting, um, updates from what worked well and, um, paying attention to what staff are requesting. And a lot of times it's, hey, we need time in the classroom to prepare and so it's always a really delicate balance of what do we do, um, at the summer? What do we do throughout the school year and what do our staff need? And so I'm, I'm grateful, from my seat, that our administrators are, um, you know, taking those things into consideration from what they hear, 'cause I think it's really important. Um, and then alongside all of this other, um, training that happened, our new staff had really great orientation. There was a new staff welcome at Parker, there was curriculum onboarding, there was a building mentoring day, there, um, was a tour that takes place around the community where our, our new hires get to see a lot about Janesville because some of them are totally new to Janesville. Um, this is just, I mean, a whole overview of things. And I always say, as someone who worked in other school districts and had, um, at that time, very little orientation opportunities, I'm always impressed with the training that our staff are afforded when they come and then the continuous training because we're, you know, investing in our people, which means that we're investing in our students. So, um, that was a lot, but certainly we talked about a lot more at that presentation. Thanks, everyone, I think, who, um, was involved in helping our staff to get, you know, started on a great start for this school year. Great things happening and, um, our students are ready to do amazing things. So, um, really, that's about it for me. I kinda went, uh, I, I didn't, I didn't do my, like, normal written, so this is just more free-flow thoughts today. I'm sure you're really grateful for that. Anyway, um, we have our next meeting, October, Denise Jensen, seventh. That was counting the fingers over there, October seventh. Four, they do, four-thirty. Um, and then our planning session will be the following week. So if there's ever anything, I keep saying this, if there's things that you would like PPC, um, to be addressing, that would be a great time to get in touch with me prior to that planning, the agenda planning session, so that we can chat about it and get it worked in. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Liz, nice job as usual. Let's not forget, big Parker Craig football this week. Friday at Monterey Stadium, Parker's home. Thursday, I believe the JV is being played at the Craig Bowl. And then the freshman Parker Craig game is at Parker. And just wanna make sure I thank, uh, Mr. Derek Green, Matt Street, and JNB Signs for that wonderful scoreboard in the bowl at Craig High School, if you haven't seen that. Nice job on the athletic department, getting that thing up on the building down there. What do you got, Denise?
I guess on the commercial. Future meetings, um, like Commissioner Paul said, the PPC committee will be meeting on Monday, October seventh at four-thirty PM here at the Educational Services Center. Our next Board of Education meeting will be on Tuesday, October eighth, the next night, at six PM, also at the Educational Services Center. Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee will meet on Tuesday, October fifteenth, with the time and location yet to be determined. And then, uh, the end of October, our Board of Education meeting and budget hearing will be held Tuesday, October twenty-second at six PM here at the Educational Services Center.